All right.
I.
Ready to start?
Meeting of the Menville Region Regional Planning Commission. This is, I guess, considered a special call meeting. Some issues that we don't have time to deal with regularly. First item on the agenda is zoning amendment consideration on mixed use in R five.
Uh, yes. Yeah, absolutely. So we discussed the concept of this during our last meeting, but we did not have the actual language before you. We just kind of said, hey, do you, are you comfortable with this idea? And as you remember, last meeting was pretty long, so we didn't get into the minutia. But I have done that now. And what you have in your packet today is some draft amendment language. Uh, this is the actual same language for commercial mixed use building that we have in C one district. Um, and as a reminder to you, just kind of how this came to the forefront is I've got a picture of the, an older picture of the building. That is being proposed for, uh, it is currently R two today, um, on, on, on North Spring Street, three oh seven North Spring Street. But they would like to do the first floor limited commercial and the second floor would be residential. And, uh, provided that this gets rezoned to R five, uh, that would be the other step that they, that they would need. But we see this as, uh, a broad applicability throughout the city, not just this property. And, uh, just really the main reason, uh, to have this mixed use setup are, um, is because the C one and R five districts are intended to have a little bit of residential and commercial. Uh, and right now, although it's intended for that, it's kind of odd that we, you can't do the first floor commercial and the second floor residential in the district that that's really intended for. So right now, what you can only do in R five is make it all residential or all, all commercial. Um, and that just, basically this just gives property owners additional options that we don't currently have in the zoning ordinance. So the language, uh, that we have, uh, in your packet is the exact same language as we have for the C one district. And, uh, this would of, of course be a special exception.
If that was one question.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It would be, it would be approved through the special exception process.
The state is this building, man?
It is in rough state today. In fact, it's at a point where we, uh, we were just discussing last week whether it needs to have a, uh, what we call tagging it to basically say that, you know, you, you cannot come into this building, um, boarding it up. We did that actually last week on another property. Um, there's a cost for the city to do that, but it is at a point where, um, it's, uh, where that it's, it's, it's something that we will look into. Uh, I do believe there will be construction that will be occurring if they get through this process. So it would be a short term thing. But yes, uh, it is not in the greatest shape. Last time it was inspected, I will say. Our inspector informed me that it was not to the point where it warranted boarding up. Now that was about three months ago, so I do think it's worth, uh, looking at that again. And I'm, and we're happy to do that in the department if you would like that.
If you have just a minute, walk around back and look and you can see, you know, the shape this thing out there. It's pretty rough, but amazing. The brick is still pretty good shape, which, oh. Amazing on the sides, but the back of it is just, and you can see the floor levels and some of the spans that weren't even built. I couldn't believe it was even built that way.
That's very good information, Jerry, and we'll do that. Look at the back. I do not know.
Stand there and look back, you'll see the whole picture.
Okay, um, so either myself or one of our inspectors will do that. I'm not sure. Uh, the previous inspector, what he did for that review, but he did inform me that, uh, it was not to the point of needing boarding up, but we'll review it again.
It, it can be fixed. It's just going to cost, I would think a lot more money than it's worth.
Yeah.
That's not our decision now.
Yeah, well, they want. Well, they have, they, as the property owners told F, have informed us that with the zoning, the way it is today, they can't make a pencil. Um, but if it does go to R five and then it does have this mixed use, then they are going to go forward with, uh, revitalizing the building.
But the most you could hope for is maybe all your songs in the circle.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, R five would be, um, now they could do, um, uh, a limited grocery, but, uh, alcohol sales would be prohibited because it, the distance to, uh, the church building. However, there, it would basically be lawyer's office, dental office, um, and, uh, I don't have the land use just in front of me, but it's, it's, it's pretty limited. I'd, I'd say the highest level of business they can do is a small scale grocery.
But then you'd have to park somewhere else and walk there, which.
Right. It would be, there would be an offsite. Now, across the street, um, is, uh, city owned parking. And we do have crosswalks there. Um, so, uh, you know, we, uh, we believe that that could be accommodated. As just as a reminder, um, we did at the last meeting recommend that R five be changed from R two to R five. Uh, but yes, the, the, what would be an issue here today would be allowing for that, uh, downstairs commercial. But, uh, if we were to not pass this today, they could do the whole building commercial, which I don't think they intend to, but they still, they could today without this amendment.
I don't have a problem with passing it. It's just the state of the building, which.
Yeah.
If they're willing to spend that much money, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we will, um, we will go and do a thorough review of the building, uh, as soon as possible, uh, because like I said, it's been three months or I can't even remember exactly, but it's been three or four months since we looked at it. And, uh, we'll, we'll see if that needs to be immediately boarded up, but prior to.
She made it.
Yeah.
Of course, this amendment would apply all, all the way across to R five, so it's not just this one property.
That's correct. It would apply for.
I think it would be beneficial in, in the R five. Cause I could see other buildings similar to this having, uh, commercial on the main floor and. Two upstairs.
Yeah. I mean, we're seeing a lot of that and C one.
R five's pretty similar to be allowed there too.
Yeah.
Well, they can have some empty parking in the back, I think. On that right side, you can get down and kind of put some gravel back there, so.
Yeah.
Cause they got a basement in.
Yeah, it's kind of a basement level, level thing. It's, you can just walk over.
I didn't, did, did you go get on their property to sit back or do yours?
I'll swap them around.
Any other discussion on this proposed amendment?
Do we know what's going in there?
Yes, they are looking to do, uh, first floor limited commercial. There are only certain things they can do, um, per R five as a zoning code. Um, and then the, the upper floor of the residential apartment.
Do other jurisdictions do this?
Yes, um, and right now we permit it in the C one district, but we do not permit it in the R five district. So.
But it's common elsewhere.
It's very common to have mixed use where in districts that allow for commercial and residential. So really what's at issue is, um, right now you can't mix and match the building. You could do the building all commercial or all residential, but you can't do it one floor commercial, one floor residential. And so there, in these districts that have both commercial and residential, it's very common in other jurisdictions to have that.
Any other questions, discussion? Have a motion motion to approve the amendment. Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? I'll call for the vote. I'm the paper. Say hi. I'll oppose. So that'll move on to the full board, right?
That's correct.
Okay, next item is another zoning amendment consideration on movers and moving rentals in C two.
Uh, yes, so we had a, um, an applicant that got a special exception prop, uh, approval from this, uh, board prior, to do an automobile repair shop. Um, after getting in there, working to get that up and going, uh, they came back to our office and said, well, we'd also like to see about maybe doing a U-Haul facility. Uh, the, that's essentially the, what the land use movers and moving equipment rentals, you know, means is having a U-Haul. Today you can only do that in the C three district. You cannot do that within the C two district. There have been a variety of, uh, I know of, uh, I know of two, um, places in town that I, I think were grandfathered in, one of which does not currently have U-Hauls, but, um, so there's been a history of having U-Haul in the C two, um, provided that it meets, uh, the requirements. Uh, we would recommend to do that. So the requirements that you see is the draft zoning language, if you will, in the blue, is the, um, existing requirements in C three. So what we're asking, uh, what we're recommending is basically use those same requirements for the C two district. Now, another, um, thing that we could do in here, and I, I did not put it in the draft, but, uh, I, I think it's worth discussing is we could put a minimum lot size, uh, connected to that. Because there are, I can see there are some properties in C two that are rather, rather small. We did not talk about what that minimum lot size should be, um, prior, so I thought that would be good for discussion.
We adopted this, this allow other things in addition to just like a U-Haul vendor?
No, this is, that's pretty much, it's pretty limited to that. I mean, it would also allow for, well, U-Haul comes with. If you go to a typical U-Haul store, you can get accessory items with it. I mean, you know, you could have your, um, you know, a dolly, you could rent a dolly or you could rent a, um, blankets or, you know, so they're, they're little small things, but this would be, that would be the only thing of size.
For some reason, I've got a trouble with, with zoning them, movers and moving equipment rental in C two. That movers reminds me of a mover, uh, somebody that moves furniture.
Yeah, that's why I was asking that.
That we don't want to get that mixed up with something, because that may not be the spot. But that language, that language up here, you know, on our heading isn't actually used in the amendment that I saw, that I could see.
Yeah, so it's, uh, yeah, it, it basically refers you to that section. And so, you know, what we could do, one of the problems that we have with this, and I think that's a very good point that Jim made about, we do not have definitions to a lot, to our land uses. So it is left to interpretation as to what movers and moving equipment rentals means. And so when I think of that, I think of it as just as U-Haul, but Jim just brought up something else that it could be. Um, and so in, when we revise the zoning ordinance, we really need to add the definitions, uh, for, for that simple fact, because that's where we've gotten into issues in the past, uh, with that, so.
And would this, would this be a special exception?
Yeah, this would be a special exception. So maybe what we should do is on this one, we could table this. We're going to have a regular meeting in two weeks. Uh, I think there are a couple of unanswered questions, size of the property.
Yeah, like lot size.
Lot size, yeah. And also, um, what is the, maybe what we do need to do is in the interim, uh, before adding all the land use definitions, that we really need to put a definition for that particular land use. So that it is limited to that and that we're not, uh, adding something else essentially. So, so with that, I'll look at the lot size and the definition of the land use and we can, uh, table, uh, with that being my recommendation would be we table it until the next meeting.
What would be the proper zoning for like Red Ball movers or something like that? You know, they're out on.
Oh, yeah. Now that would include, that would include this. I mean, they, they do the actual, uh, moving and cause that U-Haul would just be you come and get it, whereas the, the full service, I think, would, you know, be included within that, this definition too. So I guess that's what you were getting at, Jim.
That's what you're getting at, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So that, that is very true. It could, it could fall under that, so.
So what was the proper zoning for Red Ball? What, what, yeah, what was that?
What, what would be their zoning?
Uh, well, they should be, should be in C three. And I don't, I don't have the map in front of me, but if they're not zoned, C three, I mean, uh,
Maybe grandfathered.
Well, that's been out there for years. I just wondered if someone else wanted to do it.
Yeah, that maybe, that, uh, that, well, I don't think. Yeah, so today, if you were to do that, it would have to be in C three district. That'd be the only option.
And I assume that's where, what we want to keep it, right? We wouldn't.
The movers, well, that's.
A full service mover in C two.
Yeah, I think, uh, we may want to look at splitting, splitting that because I, I do think the full service, um, well, I'll say, I don't think, I would have, yeah, I don't think I would have a problem with the full service if we have the right lot size requirement. My biggest concern on this issue is we have some pretty small C two lots and they're not appropriate for parking in the amount of U-Haul vehicles or the equipment storage. Um, I'm not as concerned about the full service. You know, you're having people there and that kind of thing. I think more the issue is the parking the vehicles. I mean, that's, that's my review of it, but I welcome your.
Well, I think the larger vehicles even the area they're in, you know, close to a residential area or the visibility of getting them in and out. And let's say the lot size, they'd be a lot of.
Now, one requirement that we've got here on that, uh, those vehicles is it can't be located adjacent to a residential district. Um, so that is, that would still be in there in the C two. So if you had residential behind it, that wouldn't be permitted.
U-Haul has big trucks too. I mean, they're not just little. They're, they can have really large trucks.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying it would need to be a very large piece of property, uh, for the C two district. The, the property, the property owner who is asking to do this, their lot is rather large. Um, so, but it is in, um, it is next to all C two properties. So I think it would not be appropriate to rezone. Uh, however, in looking at that lot itself, I don't think it's inappropriate to have a, a U-Haul facility there. So that's kind of how this came about. So we'll refine this. Um, again, we've got another meeting in a couple of weeks. I do think the definition, I do think we really need a definition for this space and, um, and also a lot size requirement.
You can really control it with the lot size.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And parking requirements.
Right. Well, it, yeah, and we'll look at that to make sure that, um, that's appropriate. I mean, we have a part, a parking section, but the question is, is it what we have today appropriate in that? Okay. Well, that's a good discussion. We will, um, any, any other comments, questions, suggestions on? Sounds good to me.
Next item is, uh, revision ideas and discussion on the, on zoning ordinance.
Sure. So, uh, a few months ago, I kind of, well, I, I, I put out number of tables and land use matrices and all that. I've handed back one of those out. It is, um, it basically shows our dimensional requirements, uh, within the residential districts and then in the commercial districts. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry. I didn't hand you one as you came in. There you go. So a, a number of, um, different items has, have, have come up in this review. Uh, the first one I'll start with, I did show this, this chart, but I do want to just make another mention, because I had it on my list, is land use definitions. I think that is really critical and we really need to have that, uh, in our ordinances. With that, I jump back to the, the, the chart. Something that has, that was brought up for discussion in a previous month and we had a, a lot of, um, positive feedback on it was the idea of the R one district bringing that down from fifteen thousand square feet, as the minimum lot area to ten thousand square feet. I think the best way to analogize this would be Willow Way, if everyone knows where that is. Uh, right now that it is actually technically zoned R three. But it is a single family, uh, home throughout the whole way and it's about, um, it's about eight thousand square feet. So if this amendment were to pass, it would be larger square footage than that street. Um, I think that we're seeing that, uh, there's a desire to, um, have more, um, public recreation spaces in, in, in a, uh, generation of my age and younger and, uh, not really the need for as large of a square footage requirement. So, you know, there, a lot of cities have, have moved to, to reducing that. I do want to say that, uh, a lot of, you know, like Murfreesboro, Nashville, what they have as minimums are, are much, much smaller. I mean, we're talking six thousand square feet. At ten thousand square feet, it's pretty, it's, it's, it's pretty sizable and it would be larger, larger than what you see on the Willow Way street today. So that's just, uh, the current lot width is seventy five feet. Uh, that would, I don't recommend changing that at all. But I did want to have a discussion today on what y'all's thoughts were on that. Um,
I need to know where Willow Way is.
Oh, okay.
Sure. I want to get.
Yeah, if you go well, uh, Red Road, um, and then you'll turn off to the left. Um, it's, it's close to the very edge of the city limits.
I think if we would take and keep the side yards the same, the front yard the same, cut the back, the rear yard from fifty down to thirty. And that will cut you a little under ten thousand foot, but still, it, you won't know it if you drive down the street. The only thing from the back of your house, that if you do that, you can still build a, a single level house. You can still build twenty two hundred and fifty square foot on that lot. And that, you know, most lots will still be larger, but you know, if you was in a, something that won't be developed area, that might make the difference. I, I don't think it will hurt if you just take it out the back, the rear yard.
And you hadn't done anything to the maximum coverage, not a thing.
That's, yeah, that's right. The ma, the coverage would stay the same. We don't want to move that. But also the setbacks are an issue. You brought that up, Jerry. Um, fifty feet on rear is, is a very large back setback, for most cities are one size districts. Um, I think, uh, whether it's thirty or forty, um, you know, I, um, where I can kind of go both ways with that, but I do think, I will say that fifty is, is very large. I would recommend.
Now, I would say probably thirty percent of the houses.
Okay, I have two questions. One is, um, kind of just a general statement of, isn't that kind of what makes our lot so nice?
The large lot size. So what we have today is a, for minimums is we have a very elongated lot, if you, for, uh, for a minimum lot size. Uh, most cities that have fifteen thousand square feet have a minimum lot width of much larger than seventy five feet. Uh, it's usually a hundred. Um, so my thinking here is that if it did bring down to ten thousand square feet, really the character of the neighborhood, how you feel when you drive down the road is really very much your minimum lot width, your frontage, because that's what you see as you're walking down or you're doing. So as long as there's enough space in the back to provide, uh, some recreational room, we don't want to make it so small that someone couldn't put in a swimming pool. Then I think that people are inclined, uh, my generation are inclined to have those public parks close to them. I am, I'm very happy that the city is doing a master plan for their, for the park program. I think there are areas of our city that do not have enough parks and I think that's something that the city really needs to be concentrating on. So I think that what, what you'll see on these, a lot of these large lots is that, and I, you know, my, my sister has, has one. They do not, 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 not in town, but in another city. They do not use the very back of their lot very much at all, um, because most of their recreating is in the front of the backyard, if you will. And so what I'm seeing is that with the rising construction costs and land costs, maybe that back portion of the lot, of the lot, the back of the backyard, if you will, could be used more efficiently in, in new development. So.
And I think you said something, uh, we discussed this before. It's been a, a while ago. But I think, Jerry, you said something of, I don't, and, and I might have it with the wrong thing, that this would only apply in a few, would only affect a few places anyway.
Let me, let me.
Probably real, but developing because, you know, the city can't grow unless somebody else is being annexed. It might make the difference.
Yes.
Asking to come in to the city, because you'd have to have sewer, they have that smaller.
That is correct. And those are the two things I do want to add on that. Jerry, you touched on them is I do believe this will be a mechanism, uh, that people that want to develop on the periphery of the city will actually look to be annexed because they will see the benefit, uh, to, um, to having that, that, that smaller lot size, uh, for development. The second thing, and so I do believe it will grow the city. The second thing I'll add is that, um, it, um, let's see, you touched on, remind me, we did the annexation and then also, uh, what was the other point that you made? I just lost my. The sewer, yes, thank you. Thank you. That is, that's the other point is this would only apply where the city has city sewer. So there are some R one properties like off Wilson Lane down Kings Point Road. That's one area where the city does not have sewer. So those areas would not, you would still have a fifteen thousand square, uh, foot minimum, because unless the city were to bring sewer to that area.
Or the developer.
Or the developer would, would pay for that.
And that this might entail some. And that, this might entail some to do it, to get the figures would be feasible. Feasible to do in some areas.
That's true.
And that doesn't mean still, a developer might not even use this. He may still go, you know, two hundred by two hundred or something, you know.
So, one of the things, when you look at Willow Way. That street, it was zoned as R three, but then single family homes were put in. I'm not sure of the history of that, if there's deed restrictions. But that tells me there's a desire and has been a desire for smaller lot, single family. Houses, because someone basically rezoned it to get the smaller lot size that you can see on. On R three. So, I think a better way to handle that. From the city's perspective is to have a smaller lot size district, because. I don't know, like I said, Willow Way, I guess maybe there are deed restrictions, but we as a city can enforce those deed restrictions. So, you know, I, I think that. We need to discourage, if someone. I would not, if, if someone came to me today and said, I want a smaller lot size, I want to do a whole neighborhood of smaller lots, so I'm going to rezone to R three. I would oppose that because of, because of the fact that. There could be a multifamily that's put into it. But that's part of the reason I'm recommending to lower the, the lot size is that. I think there is a demand for that. I think people have already put that on the ground today. Although that's been a few years. And with the, the rising cost. Public park area, their recreation areas, I think that. I think that ten thousand feet is still a pretty sizable lot, pretty sizable lot.
On the two level house, you could still get, what, over four thousand square foot, which is a large, large house.
Most of the code rewrites. I think probably most, most of you know, but just to put it on the record. What I was doing seven, for seven years prior to coming back to McMinnville was, is. Doing rewrites for land development codes and. I don't think I had a city with that large of a minimum. Lot size in R one. This, this, so of all the cities I've looked at, we, we have the largest R one minimum lot size. That I've worked with.
So, is there no downside? I mean, I always consider like R one is like the sacred zoning. Sacred ground of R one, so. I mean, is there no downside? Is there no danger? Is there no?
The key thing is that we keep that seventy five foot minimum lot width. Because if we were to bring that down, then someone might be able to try to split a lot or something, but. That, in the existing neighborhoods, but at that seventy five foot lot width. I just, and the other dimensional requirements we have, I don't, I don't see that happening.
That's exactly what's happening in Nashville. They've got their rock winds down, so, but they're carrying down what I think are good houses and splitting the lot, but the motel has two town halves. Which I don't think is good.
But Rachel, traditionally, we have protected R one. I've been on this board for a while. If, when I came on it, you could build a duplex in R one. And we changed that to where you could not build. So, we have tried to protect R one, the whole.
And I would not recommend duplexes in R one. And I'm, that's interesting, Jerry, you said that, because there are a few places in R one with duplexes, and I've always wondered. How did this happen?
Was, it was late.
I think as Jerry said, keeping that seventy five foot minimum, when you drive down the street. It's going to look pretty much the same as any neighborhood. It's just your backyard's going to be small.
But when you drive through those in Murfreesboro, they don't look good.
Well, the key point I want to say is that we're talking six thousand square feet in Murfreesboro, much smaller.
See, if you drive through Murfreesboro. And if they met this requirement, you wouldn't notice the difference in driving through. Now, I mean, because you definitely have to walk around back. And, and if you could tell thirty foot from fifty by looking at it, you would know the difference.
Well, I've noticed in Murfreesboro that the roads kind of snake around now to squeeze in as many. As you want, so you do come around the back, you do see it. And I mean, that's just been my experience with, with that.
But if you cook thirty foot, it's still pretty, pretty good size back there.
Any, any other thoughts on that? We don't. You know, it, it is not in. I don't have it in draft text format, so I don't think I would. I, I would like to do that in the ordinance to show you the exact, the exact wording, and I'm happy to do that for the next meeting. If that's something that, that everyone would like to see.
I have no, the, the seventy five feet, I, I would have changed, and we're not changing. This can go for you too, you're building too, you're building more nice. I'm not too concerned about thirty foot on the back. Now, if Rachel is, you know, I'm willing to change it to forty foot or something, you know, just go right where in the middle, but I don't think you'll notice the difference. We're a group now that. We played in yard. Kids don't play in yards anymore. They go to, to leagues and, and. Different computers and different thing. And I just don't know if the backyard is that important anymore.
No, a large backyard. I think that's the key way to put it.
You just don't see kids, what I call playing. You go home and treat like.
So, there was, there'll still be a large lot, R one. Existing homes in the city. I mean, that's not go away, but I do think that. And I, I speak from personal experience on this. When I lived here before, I owned a house. The back part of it was on Osborne Street, was like straight up. It, it, so the lot size was a little bit larger, but. There was just enough back room in the backyard just for some basic. You know, recreating, and I think that a lot of people desire that, you know, they desire, they want the single family home. But they don't want this large. As big of a maintenance issue, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons I liked it. But there are plenty of, you know, one of the things that. I, I find that planners and developers, builders all agree on is having a diversity of housing stock is, is important. And right now, we have a lot of large. R one, single family, but we, we don't, we really have a very minimal amount of the small, of. Of a little bit more condensed lot size. A, single family. We just, that is our housing stock, so. I know I was looking for that. I was actively looking for that when I, well, previously. Now, with the family. I probably do want, you know, a, a little bit larger yard, but I think when you give people options like that, it, it, it helps. It helps throughout the city.
Do you want to? Put together a?
Yeah, I'll be happy to put it in, in actual.
Language.
Language format for our next meeting, and then we can, we can move from that. I think. You know, the front. We'd still have the front setback of forty. I would recommend keeping that. And I think that the side. We have a side street setback there that I think forty is a li- little much. You could go down to thirty. On the rear. I don't know, at thirty, thirty to, to, from fifty to thirty is a pretty large jump, I think. I think I'm, I would probably recommend forty on that.
And one thing on this, we say that, that's using. Extreme larger house, probably you have larger than thirty foot. And we put it, this, the minimum required, but that would take a forty five foot, they'll pass. Most houses are not that thick. So, you're going to wind up probably with forty foot anyway. I'd like to keep it, I think it would help us keep it thirty.
And keep it at thirty. Well, you guys, you guys tell me, you know, what you would.
I'm flexible on it. I just think if we're going to do it to. Do what I was in the conference, I think that's what it will take. That's just my opinion. I, I'll agree to whatever.
Yeah, so if we're talking, the front setback would be, would stay at forty. The side setback. I do think. I think it's a little strange to have a rear setback of thirty and a side of forty. We could do side at. Well, thirty five and then, and then thirty, with that.
And that was extreme cases that Jim continued that.
Okay.
That we used to give variances on that because if it wants another visibility problem.
Okay.
What was the front now? I, I kind of got lost the front.
The front is, is forty.
Right now.
Yes.
And you want to keep that.
Yes, I would keep that.
So, that would stay forty. The side is forty now, and you want to move that to thirty?
The side street would go down to thirty five.
But it's forty now.
It's forty now, yes.
The house on, on the street, we've got the front house on the street.
And the rear would go down to thirty.
But the rear is what now is fifty?
The rear is fifty today.
And it would go down to thirty?
That's, now, I mean, I, I mentioned it is potentially forty. And Jerry's recommended thirty. I think I could.
I can live with whatever that you guys think so best.
Yeah. I will say fifty is large. I, you know, I think that thirty. Maybe that is a little too, a, a little too small. But, I mean, that's a bit, that is a big jump from fifty to thirty. Yeah.
It looks like to me that if you, it would be the same, it, it would be the same on the sides and the back.
Yeah, I mean, that would keep, that would look. Would make it look appropriate. So, if you did side street thirty five, rear thirty five, it would look proportional. Okay. Seventy five, are you saying, repeat that, please, what do you mean?
The, the square footage.
Oh, yeah, I'd have to, I can, now I can do that. I can do the square footage calculation. And bring that back to you guys when we do the text. Okay, you can, you can do it.
If we do it. If we take thirty, that's going to make it. A lot day of thirty five off of one. Jim, what would that make that lot dips if we take? Now, it's seventy five by one fifty, right? Okay, so if you take.
Yeah, one thirty five, seventy five. Let's see. Now, the only thing I'd say is, you know, you do got to calculate in the, the maximum coverage there.
They give you a little over ten thousand foot, so.
Yeah. And you would need to make sure about the coverage, because we're keeping the, the coverage requirement. But yeah, I can, just to make sure, since we're not doing it right here, what I will do. Is create those calculations. It's just easy to make a math error in, in the middle of a meeting. So, that way we, we can, we can have all that. Yeah, rear would be thirty five and the side street would be, would be thirty five.
I thought we were doing forty.
Well, I mean, it's, it's open for discussion, but I, I think what you had mentioned was the side street. That, no, the front is forty, and we would keep that.
But now, keep in mind.
The back is fifty, I'm sorry.
Most of these houses are not going to use all that. They're way more narrow than fifty foot depth. They'd probably be thirty five foot there, so you're still going to probably have possibly a fifty foot backyard.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know. I, I don't know.
No, no.
I don't know. I, I just don't know. I just think that I like it the way it is. And I don't mean to be difficult, and y'all can outvote me, but we're not voting today.
No, you're not voting today.
So, I have some time to go look around.
Yes, you have time. I would encourage you to drive Willow Way Road. I would encourage anyone who does not to do that. That is the best. Example of a smaller lot subdivision that we, single family subdivision that we have in the city today.
I mean, there's a lot to balance with the neighbor housing, but, you know, I don't want to just throw away R one. Into, into something without really spending some time on it. I mean, that's, like I said, that's the hell of a ground of the. Thanks, thank you to Dr. Elleman, who was a wise man.
Yes. Yeah, and I, you know, we have people that come in and want to do different land uses. We had one a few months ago, and that we may have to move forward on a prosecutorial issue. But as far as land use things, we, we, we keep that very single family. And we would not recommend anything, I would not recommend anything that would change that. But when I look at efficiency of space, I do think. You know, with the rising home costs, you're, you're going to be able to bring in. Some homes at, at a little bit lower cost. With, with this, with this change, so. But again, I, I, I would really advise people to drive well away, because I, I just think it is the best example we have in the city.
Probably the reality of it is, we don't have a lot of. Land in the city that. That's develop at this point.
We, there's not much. There, there really is very little. But I do think one of the advantages of this is that people will see if I can get water and sewer from the city. And I'm on the edge of the city. Historically, developers and landowners on the edge of, of our city. Have not asked to be annexed because they haven't seen the benefit to them personally. I do believe with this, they will see the benefit and it will grow and make the city larger.
And that's about the only chance that we've got to grow unless it's a commercial.
There, yeah, there are a few, there are very few limited areas where I can see development. What we were seeing right now, of course, is tons of redevelopment, and that's, we are. I've jokingly said we're kind of a flipper's paradise right now, because we have so many. Projects that are, you know, flipping and doing older houses, but. I think once the price of materials, of building materials, and they are starting to go down a little bit. We're going to see more new home construction, and I do think this would, would aid in that, and I, I just feel like there is a.
You know, Middleton, San Antonio Gas, they estimated that, which, that cable's growing out that way.
I, I don't want to be anti-grav. I just want to be careful.
Yeah. And, yeah, and this, this is a important decision. I, I don't. But I, I, I do think it's one that. You know, I, I can really see the benefit to it, so.
You can grow too fast, like you talk about Murfreesboro, they've grown too fast.
It, it is mess in Murfreesboro. I live there for years. But again. Um, but again, I think when people hear smaller lots, I just wanna keep emphasizing. And what we're talking about in Murfreesboro is like six thousand square feet. That this is ten thousand square feet is vastly different than a six thousand square foot home.
I'd much rather see a little smaller one. There's so many apart, let's say, and that's what Murfreesboro is down.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that is something that. If we keep a larger single-family lot size, I do think that it could add. The, the end result could be that more, more apartments are built and less single-family homes are built. Yeah, um, I think that's. Could be a, um, could be the impact of that. It's very logical that it could be. Because, uh, you know, the cost of wages has just not increased with, I mean, the cost of housing here has just exploded, as everyone knows. And you'll be purchasing a little bit less land with this. So it should, and it should keep, it, it will, it is the best impact in the zoning ordinance that I know of. To keep, uh, skyrocketing housing prices, uh, from continuing to rise. So, okay, well, at least we spoke a lot about that one, so I will, I will put in the text amendment for that. And we'll have that for review at our next meeting. That sounds good. Okay, sounds. Um, other items that I, I, I wanted to, to discuss, um. Things that have kind of come up here recently, um, and I see is on the forefront. Is what I'd call repurposing small community churches. Uh, we have, and if you look in Realtor dot com, when I was looking for a house, I was shocked at the number of old. Church buildings. I think this is i- in our, in our city and in our area. That the church has closed down, either the, the church has gotten larger, uh, and they've left that facility. Uh, they have, um, or COVID did a number on a lot of small churches. They, they, they closed. Um, and so we have, uh, a variety, I can think of, of. Of at least three that I can think of right now that are, are in that situation where the, the church is. The church is left, but the building still stands. Um, it is too small to put a school. Um, so they are on the market for quite some time. We've been approached and I actually just yesterday went. Uh, and visited one of those locations. It's been on the market almost about a year. Um, and they're looking to do, uh, what, what, a land use that is not in our zoning code. Um, there's really, it's hard to figure out which, which land use it would be. Um, but what it really is, is a counseling center. Uh, it would be, uh, a nonprofit counseling center. That would be for the neighborhood, whether that be, uh, for substance abuse, whether that be for children. Uh, you know, from, um, with emotional problems, whatever it might be. But the idea is, is basically, um, to have it as a, as, as a counseling center. It would not feel like an office, so I can't put it as an office. It's not really a school. Um, nor is it, um, really, really, uh, you know, that. But it's not really a church anymore either, so. Um, I bring that up because it is kind of, I subdue it as a whole in our zoning ordinance. And there are a number of small community churches. Church is permitted as a special exception in R two and in R three. And with the, how fast things are moving in our market. Uh, these, these church examples, there, there's a large cost to have to change those to residential. Um, but there's, you know, there may be some things that could be done in that district, uh, from a community center. Uh, that's not, not permitted today. Obviously, we don't want that to become a, a restaurant. Uh, we don't want that to become a heavy, um, commercial use. Um, but that, that's something that I'm seeing, um, and probably you guys are seeing too, is that these older churches. Um, are staying on the market for quite some time and people are, don't really know exactly what to do with them. So I think some discussion on maybe being able to transition these to community. Uh, based, uh, land uses or, or, or something that I think our code needs. So again, we would have to flesh out the details, but.
What are, what is there something?
Uh, the, the actual property that I visited ye- yesterday is zone R two. Um, it is on.
Western Avenue.
Yes, it is five twenty-five West End Drive, but that is not the only church. Old church building that is in that situation today.
That one almost sits on the street now. It's very small for a yard.
Hmm.
And they're not using it at all?
No, there's no use today. That church has actually outgrown that facility and they built another facility.
Do they go straight to street?
They do, the, there are, there is, uh, lots in the back as well, that's parking. But I would say that there really is no land use for it. Uh, I've looked to try to figure out what land use in our code it would match up with. And I, I really don't think it matches up with anything.
So that one is R in R two.
That isn't an R two, it is not an R one, and that, and when, meeting with the property owner, I did tell them, if this were an R one. It kind of is what it is, but it is an R, it is an R two, so.
Is that something you can look at how other communities?
Yeah.
Maybe have, uh, work that into their zoning code.
Uh, I can, um, again, this was just even yesterday, so we haven't, haven't, haven't had time to, to flesh that out. But I do have some ideas on it about how we can write it to limit it. Um, but one thing I do wanna. Kind of emphasizes that I think we, outside of this one particular issue. I think we need to find a way to repurpose these old churches because they're, they're staying vacant.
Churches are allowed in R two, but there's visiting requirements or parking requirements.
That's correct.
Square footage requirements.
Yeah.
They sure just been there for all my life. It's been added on to that years ago, so it's probably in the county.
You would want them to be little office buildings or anything?
Uh, I think, you know, we. I am concerned about opening it up to the term office in R two. Um, cause then that could open up medical office, you know, um. You know, but I think that. If it's like a community center, um, I think that.
Safer.
Is, is a little safer to not allow as much intrusion into, into that, into that district. But I mean, I think. Yeah, so I think that's, that's, that's the approach I'd recommend, yeah.
Community center, what, what you talk about there?
Well, I mean, it's something that is, is, is really for the community. It's, it's something that, um. It is open for, for counseling. Uh, it's open for, um. You know, for individuals that, uh, that have, have a specific need or a community meeting. Um, you know, you'll see that in a lot of, um, neighborhoods, actually in Texas, where it was. Is they would have a community meeting facility within, what, most of them would be in HOAs, but you would still, you would still see that. Uh, we don't really, that is one avenue we could take with these, these older churches. So, so I don't have all the answers for that today, but I wanna put it on everyone's radar. Um, because repurposing these community churches are something I think, I think we need to look at.
I'm afraid to get in the. Keep in mind, I'm afraid of getting in rehab type places in the middle neighborhood. And then the neighborhood's gonna say, we're gonna have to build that. And then you get in these methanol clinics, you know, that, uh. And nobody wants them in their neighborhood. I'm, I'm afraid that might get into something like that, but I don't know where you can exclude them. It's like, um.
Yeah, well, that's, it would, that's where the land use counseling center, that's why I don't wanna open up. To medical office or dental office or something like that. I think counseling center is. When I toured the property, that's the word they kept, and they kept talking to me, the prospective applicant, uh, what they wanted to use. Uh, that's the term that I come, come with it. Now, I think that. As I've said before, we need land use definitions, and I would, this is one I would recommend having it land use definition. So that it's, um, you know, is not too broad, I guess you'd say.
That probably, probably worth more money with that than buildings on it, than the buildings in my opinion. I think the property would be worth, more valuable to me without any buildings on it than with the buildings that's on it now.
Oh.
If you just have the queens.
Yeah, yeah.
Demolition.
Yeah, the demolition.
If you go straight streets and left four houses on it.
Three, I'm up to ten.
If it were R one, that'd be six, actually, not ten. Um, but yeah, I, I'll, I'll draft up some language about that. I, I've told the prospective applicant on this that it could take some time. Um, it could take a couple of months to get them through the process, but they, they understand that. But I, I personally think it's important, not only for this applicant. Uh, in that land use of counseling center, but. You know, I, I can see some language of saying like, for existing, uh, place of assembly. Buildings in the R two district, uh, you can do these things with them. Because the reality is, our code is so narrow in R two right now, that there's very little, other than just. Making it a duplex, which is hard to do with the shape of the building. So you, you've, you've got a lot of changes of that building, a lot of money put in, that's why it's staying vacant. And so.
We have to really pick for two.
Yeah.
Also in these, I've noticed over the years, the dates to churches. Some of those have reverberatory clauses, that if they are ceased to be used for a church, they revert to the original person who. Gave them as a church. I've seen that a lot, so, you know.
Uh, I do know in this case, it's the actual church that is, would be the, would be the seller, um.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll dig deeper into that and we'll see what we can do. Um, another, uh, item that's come up, um. And, you know, we've talked about a lot of permitting more things in districts, but I, I wanna give you an example, one where I think. We, I would recommend that it no longer be permitted. And that is automobile wrecker service in C three. Uh, there is no term in our zoning code for junkyard. That is the closest thing we have. And we have a few that are serious property maintenance issues today. Uh, oddly enough, automobile wrecker service is not permitted in the industrial districts. That, to me, does not make any sense, because the industrial districts are where you want to hide higher intensive land uses. But instead, we, if you're gonna do that in the city, you have to be in C three. A lot of the C three property we have is pretty valuable property. Um, and some of the automobile wrecker services that we have that are not in ideal locations. And I think that is in part because of the zoning ordinance. I, uh, think that that needs to be shifted to industrial property. Uh, and it would, anything that is currently in C three, it would be, um. Uh, it would become a non-conforming use, um, so, but nothing, nothing in, in advance. And I, I think that's, I highly recommend that.
To be illegal, man.
There'd be a legal non-conforming use, yes.
Are you saying illegal or legal?
Legal, it'd be, the, the exist, the properties that are existing today would be legal non-conforming uses.
Same thing as C two.
Yeah, well, the only.
First the street down there, that, what is that? Let's see.
Well, the, the, the one with the U-Haul C two, that we're talking about.
I know there's, there's several, I know one on worship street. Their main objective is car repair, but they've got a record and they got.
Yeah.
They put the red car, cars, but it's, it's shady, you know, it's got.
Yeah, so that's gonna be the next topic I get to. You, you're jumping ahead of me. Um, the. The only place you can do a automobile wrecker service, which is, that's really what it is, is, is a junkyard. And it's a nice name for it, is in C three. Again, that is just. That's harming the community, I believe. And I think it should only be in the, uh, I would only recommend it to be in the industrial district. Again, lea- it, there'd be legal non-conforming uses, but that is a, a recommendation I would definitely make. Any, any questions? So with that, um. We do have another automo-, uh, we do have another land use that is referred to as automobile repair shop. Um, that is, um, permitted, uh, in, in C two and in C three. Um, we have a, a business today that is in C two, uh, and has expressed a desire to have. Um, a limited ability to use a tow truck to take broken down cars. To bring it to the shop, not for the automobile wrecker service need, which is a junkyard and it's stored. But to literally get the vehicle and put it to the repair shop. I think it's logical as a, as, if you are in a business of broken down cars, that you would want, uh, a, uh. A mechanism to go get the broken down car. Um, so, but I also think that because that is permitted in C three. What we're seeing is, we're seeing automobile repair shops that turn into automobile wrecker services. AKA junkyards and expands it. So we've got, so that's another reason to get that out of C three. So it's clear, okay, automobile repair shop can have one limited tow truck. Uh, you gotta make sure you have parking requirements, you gotta make sure everything's met, but. We need something to enforce, we need a clear dividing line so that we can enforce those that become a junkyard. Cause right now, it's, we've got a few of those properties and that, there would be, if the zoning ordinance were set up this way, I think it'd be easier to enforce.
Would a lot of us use the rollback or something, bring those cars in?
A, a rollback?
Yeah, you know, the.
Yeah, yeah, like a, a limited, now, that's something we need to look, we need to clarify exactly what, you know, so it's not an eighteen wheeler. Eighteen wheeler that is there that they say is their one, you know, vehicle they're, they're using, but, um. You know.
So this auto repair shop, they're allowed in C two and C three, what do you wanna limit them to, to what?
Well, in C two, they do not have the ability today. To, in C two, automobile repair shop does not have the ability to have a small tow truck. On the property that can go, go and get a broken down car and bring it back. That does not exist.
But in C three, they can have a tow truck.
In C three, they cannot, today, they can not only have a tow truck, they can have a gigantic junkyard.
I'm still confused. Is the roll truck, you know, most of them have that rollback, you tilt the bed and you take a, reach and pull it on. It's like a flatbed truck. Can they have that?
It's, um, it's not clear.
I would, I would think, it looks like a regular vehicle.
Yeah, um.
And that's pretty necessary, I mean, because any car that breaks down is probably what's gonna go each.
Yeah, I, I would say it's not. It's not clear in the zoning ordinance today whether you could or could not, and I think we need to make it clear. That would be right. Does that make sense?
That's where it tends to change since it's only.
Yeah.
Like, but then we're gonna think about a rollback and somebody thought of it, you know, but, you know, it's the way of moving a car.
So I'm still stuck here. So auto repair shops, would you want to limit them also to the industrial? Or just, are you just stating how it is?
Yeah, I, I, well, it's the automobile wrecker services that I think need to move to the industrial district. The automobile repair shop needs to stay, I would recommend. The automobile repair shop needs to stay, I would recommend staying C two and C three.
Okay.
Yeah, but it would be clarified as to what type of vehicle was permitted for towing. And not towing in the C two and C three districts.
Okay, you're gonna top that one up.
Yes, because today it's not clear. I, I, I mean, you could probably interpret it both ways, because it, there's not. There's not enough info, it truly, I don't think there's enough wording to interpret it correctly, that's probably the best way to put it. It's, it's, there's a, a gap there.
Anything else?
Uh, those are the key, the key uh changes that I, I see, um, I mean, there. You know, no zoning code is, is perfect, um, but I'll say that uh those are. Uh, the ones that have, have jumped out at me, and I do want to make, just make a point on the, on that community church one. Yes, this is an issue that brought, came into us yesterday, but I've had repurposing community churches on my list for quite some time. As an issue, so. Uh, yeah, so those are them, those are the ones, um, you know, we've got. I will, that's a, a good bit of, of potential work before the next meeting, so I may not be able to get all of that done. Um, but we will um. Get as much as we can and then we'll, we'll move forward from it. Does that sound good?
Yeah, it sounds, I mean, it might take a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, yeah, I mean, just like the movers and mov- moving rental owners. Yeah, i- it does depend on what the regular business is, but, you know, we will throw out some draft language and um. You know, multiple heads are better than just one, so there's maybe things that you guys see and then we want to take it back and revise it. Uh, very comfortable with that, so.
Number five is the, the change from regional to municipal.
Sure. We have, and I wanted to just give you guys a little more uh information on that. Um, I have, unfortunately, with our office, uh, we've been pretty slammed here lately. We have not had the opportunity to review what um. Those jurisdictions that have made that change, uh, how they feel about it after the change, we still need to do that. But I did want to let you know that. I, I, we counted up the plat, the number of plats that have been approved in the past year. Uh, seven of the plats are actually in the planning region, but not in the city limits. Only six of them are actually in the city limits. So with restrictive annexation, I I would say that we're doing a lot of plat work in the county. Uh, and so that's one of the reasons, you know, we. Uh, one very big difference from when I was here prior and working under Mr. Brock is. We got a lot more going on. And uh, I think that if that restrictive annexation were not. I- i- if, if it were a lot, if it were possible that we could annex these properties in. Maybe it would be worth continuing with that regional planning commission form, um, but. I think that's one thing, that's one reason I wanted to let you guys know is that. We're seeing a lot of plat work in that area of the county and in areas that I don't really see ever being annexed. Having said that, we need to uh call these other jurisdictions, so I'm not making a recommendation on that today.
Find out what the rest of them are doing, I just wonder about that.
Well, it's always best to ask someone that did it about a year ago and then say, hey, you know, what's your? Now, do you like it, do you not like it?
Unforeseen things that happen.
Yes, yeah.
My biggest thing is, I will not, is um. We're changing these um standards on R one. Smaller lots. And I can think of several places that people might be considering now, you know, I'm ten thousand square foot lot. I might put a subdivision in, of course, they gotta be annexed into the city. And I'd like to know I control that now, then later, you know, that, that, but that's the only thing I can think of right now.
So, well, I was thinking the process would be that if you owned one of those properties. You would then ask to be annexed into the city, um, and at that point. You, you, you ask the annex is as R one, and at that point, you would have that. That lot size, provided that you had sewer. You know. So it would be kind of like an annexation agreement part, so that would. I feel like would lock in. You would do, you would do the, you would do that before you subdivided, basically.
And that really wouldn't matter whether this regional.
That's right.
Area exists or not.
Yeah, people would be coming to us asking, can I be annexed? We would do that, that annexation agreement, so to speak. And then after that, they would subdivide, so that it would be a step prior to the subdivision.
If reviewing the plants and everything, is that worse really, though, usually that control, and once you keep your control up, you're never getting back.
Yeah, I think the only. Yeah.
And these are real people of a board that are actually looking at things, instead of, wouldn't it, wouldn't, then it wouldn't, we wouldn't ever.
No, it would go, it would go to the Warren County Planning Commission. Now, I would not recommend this prior that I was here before, the, the county has. More rules and regulations, so it would go to a planning commission, it would, it would just not go to the city's planning.
I'm like, Jerry, I'd be very cautious about giving up this. Not just power, but protections and oversight.
It's a lot easier on the county to get one.
Yeah, that's true, it is true, and uh. Yeah.
What did you say?
It was easier with it, less rules, same life, or they didn't.
So one thing I, I think I'd like to do is show you guys, and I, I'll make a note to do this, um. We didn't get, I didn't get a chance to before the meeting to put this up, but I, I'd like for you guys to actually see what the planning region is. Cause it's, it's obsolete, in my opinion, it doesn't make much sense. So the two areas of the, that the city has grown the most. If you look at, uh, like you're driving uh to Manchester and you're driving to Murfreesboro. We've actually gone so far out in annex that it is out of the planning region. So anything that gets annexed there, we do not, is not in the planning region already.
Quick, push here, refer.
Uh, if, if we're talking about going to Murfreesboro out. Yeah, like out past Newtown, that is actually outside of the planning region. So we're already seeing a situation where the city's annexing property that is outside of the planning region. So we could, we can't even review those plats today, so I think it'll make more sense with the, with the.
Why don't you put that together visually so we can see it?
Yeah, I think if you see it on a map, you'll.
Cities that have done this, and see what they're reacting to. Feeling is on, then maybe we can revisit this.
Yeah. No, it has been, it has been, and Jerry made the great uh observation that, at the last meeting of. We've got so much going on that we needed a special meeting to talk about all this, because I kept um. Waiting for lower month uh agenda and it did not occur. So um, I think these revisions, we may be looking at doing special meetings for that very reason. Okay, I will do that, I'll put that up on the, on the screen. Not so much, uh, but we have not had the ad out for that long, uh, you know, I do want to. Publicly very thank Katie Camisa, she left me with some very good, you know, information to, to not. Make sure things don't get missed, I thank her for her service, she's, she. Uh, she did an excellent job, um. I do also want to uh thank uh the Upper Cumberland Development District. They are in the interim uh helping us with reviewing site plans, plats, and historic zoning applications. Uh, which will, um, you know, it'll be a second set of eyes, um. When we bring these to you guys, so there won't be a planner actually here, um, but they're using uh. Mister Tommy Lee, who's been here before, his staff. Uh, are, are looking at some things and helping us with some things, so I do want to thank them for that, and they're actually. Doing that free of service for three months, um, so, yeah, so, thanking them for that.
Anything else?